All right. Welcome and good evening. I would like to call the Monday, September 22nd, 2025 School Board Meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Duffy.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
W Felton.
Here.
Clavlin.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
And Chair Human.
Here.
That's six present.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask all who are able to please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, I want to welcome everyone who's here. I'm really excited about this group over here. Hello? But first, I would like to swear in our new student school board reps. So, I'm going to have you each one at a time come up and do an oath.
Oh, it's me?
You go first?
Yes.
So, for all of you, it is an honor that you were selected to serve as a liaison between the South St. Paul School Board and the students at South St. Paul Public Schools, Special District, School District Six. As you recite this oath of office, you assume responsibility in carrying out the duties and expectations of a student school board member. Furthermore, you will play an integral role in working together with the school board and the superintendent to continue making South St. Paul Public Schools a safe and effective place to learn and grow for all students and staff. All right, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to just read it? Or do you want me to repeat it and you can recite it?
How about you repeating it?
Okay. I hereby publicly affirm.
I hereby publicly affirm.
My commitment to the oath of office.
My commitment to the oath of office.
I swear that I will faithfully complete.
I swear thou faithfully complete.
The duties of the office of student school board member.
The duties of the office of student school board member.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools.
Of South St. Paul Public Schools.
Special School District Six.
Special School District Six.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. I guess same option. Goodness. Chloe.
Hi.
Hi.
So, just read it?
If you want.
Okay. I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I swear that I will faithfully complete the duties of the office of student school board member of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
You want me to do it or you can do it?
I got it. I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I swear that I will faithfully complete the duties of the office of student school board member of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Well, I am so glad that we have that official business out of the way. Welcome and thank you for being here. And welcome and thank you for being here to everyone else who's here and people who watch on Town Square Television or online. It's great to have an interest in what's happening in our schools. Okay. First up, I am looking for approval of our meeting agenda and minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular board meeting agenda for this evening as well as the minutes for August 25th, 2025's work session, August 25th, 2025's business meeting, September 8th, 2025's work session, and September 11th, 2025 special meeting. Do I have a motion? Second. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any discussion regarding the agenda or minutes? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries six oh. Thank you. Okay. Now that we have sworn in our student school board reps, I am going to invite you up first for the Quality in Action and Reports to please introduce yourselves to the community and share what's happening.
Hi, my name is Fannette and I'm interested in medicine. So, when I go to college, I plan on majoring in pre-med. And my biggest goal for the future is to own my own business. And what I'm excited for this school year is the health internship in the second semester for tri-district. I'm excited to see the process behind school board decisions and how they affect us in the school district.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm Chloe again. I play softball and I'm kind of secretly really good at bowling. And next year, I plan on majoring in criminal justice and minoring in psychology. What I'm most excited about this school year is prom at the U.S. Bank Stadium. And then, I'm excited to hear more about what the board does behind the scenes as a student school board representative.
Thank you.
My name is Monty Whitaker. My favorite subjects are chemistry and history. And this year, I'm a captain for both debate and knowledge ball. The thing that I'm most excited about this school year is graduation. And the reason why I'm most excited to be a student school board representative is just to get to hear new thoughts and opinions that I wouldn't have been able to otherwise.
Thanks.
This month is Hispanic Heritage Month and CDLU had a recent week where we had to dress up as certain themes. I think most recent was Jersey Day that I remember. Perchance, yeah. And then, we have teacher appreciation for soccer, September 16th, the Gold Awards Program tomorrow, bright and early. Oh, homecoming royalty coronation is September 29th. Voting first begins this Friday for the homecoming court. And then volleyball pink outs October 1st. And the homecoming football game will be October 3rd. And right now, our football team is four and oh.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, that's all.
All right. Thank you. Good job for your first one. We look forward to big things from you guys. It has been a real privilege getting to meet with them and learn more about them. And the things that they're bringing to, well, Lisa and I have been at the meetings to our attention, we wouldn't get from just being at these meetings. So, it's really great and we appreciate the work that you're going to do and bring forward for us. Okay. Next, the next big exciting Quality in Action, I'm going to invite Terry Britoey up to talk to us about the tree planting project.
Yes, good evening. And in honor of School Board Appreciation Month, I just want to say thank you for your service too. We have an absolutely wonderful school board. You guys are fantastic listeners for one. And that's when I look across the panel here, and I've had interactions with each and every one of you. And the thing that sticks out to me is that you are so interested in making this a great place that you first listen with both ears. So, we thank you for that and thank you for your service from now until the end of your tenure, which hopefully it's never, or at least for the next three to four years while I'm still here. Okay. So, good evening, Drs. Ambroino and the school board. I'm here tonight to, I love Quality in Action. And that's another thing. Not a lot of school boards do Quality in Action. It's such a cool thing. You get a little glimpse into what's going on in each site. And this was an easy one to select. We get two of these a year. And sometimes I'm like scratching my head for like, how could we do this show and tell? Even better every single time. And I think we've done it this time. You can see on your screen that we had last Tuesday, a day called Plant a Tree Day. And it's a very simple title, but it was a very complicated process to get to where we were last Tuesday. And I have the Kaposha Community here, which is filled with staff, community partners, and families. And they're going to explain a little bit about how this came from an idea from what I hear from Leave It to Beaver, which I can't, I can't wait. For you kids out there, Leave It to Beaver was a show back in the 50s and 60s, okay? Might be on, it's not on Nickelodeon anymore or anything like that, is it? And I'm sorry, I just offended you by saying Nickelodeon to you. You don't watch Nickelodeon.
It's on MTV.
It's on MTV. Yeah, sure it is. Yeah. Aubrey might still have rabbit ears, I think, and he's getting it that way. But anyways, our mission is to engage, educate, and empower. And this is a wonderful example of how we've engaged our entire community. There was education on that day from every aspect and hopefully empowering and inspiring our kids to build a better community when they're much older. Okay? And so, if I could have this team of Kaposha, the Kaposha Community come up, so we would ask everybody to come up, families included. We have Ms. Jill Kruenquist, who is one of our intervention teachers. Bridget Farrell, who is our science specialist at Kaposha. Aubrey Wright, who is an interventionist. And I'm going to skip one, but Rachel Schindler, she's the one in the green cap in the picture there too. And she largely was our partner from Trichus. She's going to talk a little bit. Karen Zumach is here as well, and she's going to explain her role. And then, I didn't have a picture of Mark Fenton, so that's really Mark Fenton right there. Okay?
Come up, Terry.
So, I said he didn't have to speak, but I did want to include a picture of him. And then, several members of our Kaposha community. So, if I could have, like, I just heard this Leave It to Beaver story earlier. And Aubrey said, "I will come and I will show my face, but I really don't want to speak." And don't ever tell me that because Aubrey Wright, who has been one of the founding members, I believe, at Kaposha, and may very well have his own wing of the building named after him, or the field a certain year here. But this idea came last spring, and I can't really explain the Leave It to Beaver connection. Would you just share it with us, please?
I will not.
Yeah, yeah.
So, anyone who knows me knows I love Leave It to Beaver. I watch it every morning before I go to work to put me in a good mood. And there was an episode where Beaver was in his classroom and they were talking about trees and the love of trees. And so, he really internalized that. And the premise of the show was that he really loved a tree that they planted. He loved it so much at his old house that he dug it up, brought it to his new house. And that was kind of the premise of it. And it's got me to thinking, you know, I remember when Washington School was at Kaposha, in the Kaposha site. You know, we've been a school there forever. And I remember as a kid, growing up in that neighborhood and enjoying all those trees until we lost them from Dutch elm disease. But it was really fun and just hanging out with the trees, so to speak. And long story short, Kaposha came along. We had beautiful trees there and we've lost them through disease and weather and whatnot. So, I happened to see, should I continue?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, yeah. So, saw Tree Trust in my neighborhood. I live by Kaposha. And I found out we have like-minded tree lovers here. And we thought, hey, why not give the kids an experience and get some, get some color back and some beauty back in the neighborhood? And the really cool part was, I'll pass it over to Rachel, is when I, when I called up, when I called up Rachel, she knew of Kaposha. She goes, "I was in your neighborhood and yeah, that's the school. It's kind of like a desert." So, Rachel was phenomenal. I really appreciate all her talents and so, I guess I'll pass it over to her.
Actually, yeah. I wonder if Jill could come forward and maybe Bridget and just your connection with this, because I know your connection with the environment very, right? Close to your heart. And being our science specialist too, she had another connection with someone in her family, I think, right? And I tell you what, Kaposha, whenever we, whenever I give tours, I'm so excited to show people not only the inside of Kaposha, but the outside of Kaposha. And we have taken a hit on trees and shrubs over time. And in conjunction with that cartoon character down there, Mark Fenton, these guys actually asked for a few meetings in the spring to bring Mark in to say like, what can we do here? Because this is a beautiful place for kids to go to school and we want it to continue to be a beautiful place. So, could you just maybe just share your connection with the story too?
Sure. So, I guess my brother's school, he works in St. Paul and they had Tree Trust out, so I kind of talked his ear a little bit to figure out what, how this might work. And then, my husband, he's a map maker. And so, he helped make the first iterations of where we thought trees could go. And so, then we brought that to Tree Trust, which was great. And then, I guess planting day, I got to have my mom come out, which was really fun. It was pretty wonderful. So, yeah, a lot of, as Mr. Britoey said, a lot of steps went into just this one, Plant a Tree Day. And it's, it was wonderful.
So, my connection with Tree Trust was that when my own children were in elementary school, my husband wrote a grant for their school to receive trees. They went to an environmental magnet in St. Paul. And he actually had to do a lot of the work for writing the grant. And then, when I found out that we didn't really have to do the grant part, we just had to, you know, help with the logistics kind of thing. Like, that was like so much better. So, and as soon as I found out that we were getting the trees, I told my husband, I said, "You're taking September 16th off because you're coming to plant trees." He's in the video. So, we kind of like trees in my house, or yeah, in my family, so.
Wonderful. Thank you. And if we could just kind of roll through some of the slides, Lisa? And then, we're going to talk to our folks from Tree Trust too. So, you see, each time we had a meeting, there was just another connection that was made that just made this plan even better. And so, this was the end result of where the trees were going to be planted. They are all indigenous species as well and a lot of different types of trees and shrubs that we have there as well. And so, if you have the chance to drive around Kaposha, you instantly see, it just looks different. Okay? And our hope is that when kids grow older, that they can look back at this experience and say, you know what? I helped create that place right there. And so, this was just kind of the first look at it. And then, we had several volunteers come in that received a training. And it was so cool, like recess is going on and we have this tractor out there. And this is how much kids love our playground. I don't even think they noticed the tractor, to be honest with you. But the day before, they came out and put all the trees down there and then, and then filled those holes. And then, if we could keep going. And every single classroom was assigned a 45-minute to an hour period of time in which they could go on. And they actually helped dig the holes. Each volunteer was, became a teacher and taught about every part of how to prepare and plant a tree. Of course, there was a big pile of mulch, so who doesn't love to go play in the mulch pile, right? And also water. And you can see there's Jeff Kruenquist right there, who had more fun with the water, I think, than the kids did. But they were also very serious about taking care of these trees and making sure that they were planted the right way. And of course, the planting. And every kid took a part in planting the tree that they were assigned to. And that is Bridget's mother as well. All right. And the last one here, and if you can just play the video here.
Right here, Bob. Perfect. Two scoops. Nice, good job. Handle the hand. Perfect demonstration.
Victoria, you can do it.
Yep. Step on it. Oh, that's a good one.
Ooh, that's cool.
That's one.
There you go. You got it.
Another one for Victoria.
Very nice. All right.
Good.
Oh, that's a good one. Hand it to Terry. Thanks, gently.
Look out, Billy.
Perfect. You guys are great listeners.
We always dress as pink cowboys too when we plant trees. It just happened to coincide, I think, with one of the Hispanic Heritage Month days of dressing up like a cow person or whatever it was. So, it was super cool. So, where was I going to get to? Oh, they got to name their trees too. And so, some of the names, I'll just tell you right now. We have one, one class, we have nicknames at Kaposha, kind of helps them identify with their school community or their classroom community. So, one name was the unbelievable bee tree, which was clever. The wishing tree. Shady, makes sense. And then, my favorite is just Jeff. They just named a tree Jeff. So, super cool. And again, lots of ways to connect to the community. Basically, I've invited a couple chaperones who were there that day and their kids just to talk about like how fun that experience was or what it meant to them too. So, maybe Sadie, do you want to step up with your mom, Laura? Yeah. What was that day like?
I think planting with Tree Trust was so fun. And I personally love planting. And I think it's pretty cool for all the kids to get to experience that. Overall, I think it will be awesome for everyone to come back as adults and see the big trees that they planted years ago.
Very cool.
Thank you, Sadie.
And Laura, you helped with your husband, right?
Yep. Yeah, it was great. I got to help with the fifth grade class, Sadie's class, and then a group of kindergartners. And yeah, Tree Trust was awesome. They really engaged with the students and asked them to kind of think about all the benefits trees give us. And I just hope it inspires more time with nature and love of science. It was an awesome experience. Yeah.
Would you take fifth graders or kindergartners?
It was, it was cool to see the difference. Tall as the shovel.
She's a pro. Yes, exactly. And Austin, come on up with your dad AJ. And you guys were there planting that day too. What was your experience like?
So, it was fun to learn, to learn all the steps to planting a tree. While we were helping our community by planting the trees, we were also learning how, what all the steps that trees need to grow, like the water and the, and the roots. And then, they need the dirt to grow.
Very cool. And what was that like for you, working with your son?
It was, it was really, it was a fun time just seeing all the kids. They really got into it. Nobody was, you know, staying off to the side, not wanting to do it. They all wanted to get in the dirt, get dirty. And it was just, it was awesome. We said two scoops for everybody and they kept lining up. I want to dig more. I want to dig more. So, it was a good time.
Those holes could have been really big holes by the time we were done. So, thank you guys and thank you for taking part in this. And you can see like the memory that it may create for families too. Like, you remember that when we were in fifth grade and we planted a tree at Kaposha? Our theme this year is unplugged. And so, we're working with kids to talk about all the different ways that they can get off their device, their phones, video games. And what a perfect way to kick off our fall down there at Kaposha, to show kids that they don't need these all the time, right? That they can get out and do something with their hands and get dirty and make their environment great again. So, I just want to thank these group, this group of community members and the staff at Kaposha that kept this alive. And quite honestly, I didn't do anything. It was just, what do you need? When is it happening? And they did it all. So, I want to thank the Kaposha staff for that and all of the Kaposha community. I do want to introduce the folks from Tree Trust though, because we had our experts there as well. And they were so highly organized that we didn't have to do much except for show up. And it was really nice that after the training, like our, our parents became teachers. I had said that before. And they were teaching the kids, not necessarily Tree Trust. So, Rachel, you want to come up with Karen and maybe just say a few words?
Hi, thank you for having us. Yeah, this, this program is based in basically community feedback and involving the kids as much as possible. So, each classroom got to plant a tree with their classroom teacher and then name it as a class. And we have these little name tags that are weatherproof. So, hopefully, they come back, you know, five, 10 years from now and they can find the name tag and see which one they planted with their class. There is also currently a traveling museum exhibit that is in the classroom of the science teacher here that teaches the kids all about the benefits of trees in urban settings specifically. So, it's called Our Town Trees. It was developed with the U.S. Forest Service and was there another partner?
The Science Museum.
The Science Museum of Minnesota. So, not only is it, you know, a learning moment, but having that map that was already drawn up before I even showed up was great. Knowing that the community really wanted these trees and will take care of them is amazing.
Well, I'll just say that thank you to all of you for showing up. I know this program is, we've been running the, it's called the Learning with Trees Program since 1992 and delivered this programming to schools all across the state. So, just because you've already done it once in South St. Paul doesn't mean we couldn't come back again. So, we're really lucky to have generous private donations that come in to provide funding for this program. And we're really excited to see all those trees grow. And thank you for getting a little tear here with, you know, having the kids talk about those benefits of trees and recognizing that this is an impact on your community. And we're so grateful to be able to be part of it with you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, you guys?
I have a quick question. So, where, where do you get your trees from? Like, where do you source the trees from?
So, we source from a few different nurseries in the area, but largely Bachmann, Wilsons, Wolson's, and Bailey's are a few of the nurseries.
I want to ask Austin and Sadie, what did your class name your trees?
Do we have a name yet? I know we only have half of them named.
Oh.
My class didn't vote for me.
Not yet?
My class didn't vote.
Okay. Too busy with wit and wisdom right now. They'll get to it.
At my house, there was disappointment that Trevor didn't win.
Trevor, yes.
So.
I appreciate it.
And then, oh, please, Wendy.
No, I just wanted to say, I look forward to driving by there in the next few days and seeing those trees planted. The main reason is because I grew up right across the street from the school. So, I'm looking forward to seeing the planting of those trees.
I think I might have missed it or I didn't count on the map fast enough. But how many trees did you plant?
Yeah, just short of 30. I think it was 29 trees.
Wow.
26 trees.
Oh, that's, that's a lot.
All sides of the building. And, you know, part of it was like, we have this awesome playground. We don't have a ton of shade out there. And so, just putting trees in strategic places for kids to enjoy the playground as well, because we know it's a community playground too. So, yeah. So, nice job, team. Way to go. And yeah, take a trip around Kaposha.
Yeah.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, yes, Paul.
I just, I guess I just wanted to say a sincere thank you to our students and to our faculty and our staff and the community for rallying around this. This is changing the trajectory of our community for generations. And I know it's a very small thing, but it's, it's such a huge thing. And so, I, this is a really, really big deal. And I also wanted to say thank you to our administration. I wanted to say thank you to Mark. I know I have worked on tree planting projects in state government. And administrators in your position have said, "My job is to take down trees, it's not to plant them," because it's easier to mow lawns. And so, I know this is a commitment from the administration to ensure that there are healthy trees and to listen to the activism and the thoughts and of our students and our staff and our faculty and say, "How can we make this work?" I think it's fantastic. And so, just thank you to all the people who made this work. And thank you to the administration for listening and making it a part of who we are in the future. And South St. Paul is going to be a better place to live in 10 and 20 and 30 and 50 years. So, thank you.
Leaving a legacy. So, thank you. And we did not hit a sprinkler line.
Not one sprinkler line. So, and if you've seen like 50 kids wheeling shovels around the parking lot, it makes a, not parking lot, but around the grounds, it makes an administrator nervous. And nobody got hurt in the whole thing. So, so I want to thank this group once again. Thank you for your time and attention tonight and have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Well, that is some good news.
Well, Director Cummings, that was really well spoken. Thank you. All right. As we wrap up quality and action, I hand it over to Dr. Zambrino.
Yeah. What a great quality and action. And, you know, it was so heartbroken when I saw all the trees coming down around town after I started. And we had quite a blow for a lot of trees. So it's fun to see our, our students and staff having an impact on bringing that back. Really cool. Talk about having an impact. Our school board has a tremendous impact and I'm sure you all loved, uh, being flattered with the tension. But the reality is, um, a lot of people don't understand how much work it is, uh, to be on a school board. You're listening to stakeholders, you're engaging some very big decisions. And I know it'll come up later, but we're talking about the finances of our district, the academic outcomes of our district. Uh, it's a lot of responsibility and, um, I'm very thankful to have you all to share that with. I know our administration and staff see it too. I think it's part of our blessing of being in a small community is that we all know each other. Uh, but sometimes boards aren't always there to really see the, uh, the best happen in a school district. And I can say that that's true about our board. I also love that it's a very diverse group. You all have very different interests and angles that you approach to work, which is really essential too. We, we don't just do one thing, right? We don't just do athletics. We don't just do academics. We don't just do activities. We do all of it. And we do it from birth to earth as we engage, educate and empower our community. And so just wanted to say thank you. We're not doing it on camera, but we did have some, some treats earlier to, to celebrate that. But, you know, you probably don't hear it enough. I know you hear the concerns and we want to hear concerns, but we should also hear the good things. So thank you for, for your support of me and our team and our staff and students. It means a lot.
All right. Moving along, I would like to invite, um, like there's a whole crew of you. Dr. Candice Burkhart and Amy Winter and team to give us an update on Minnesota Accountability Performance Report Metrics. What's that?
Jennifer Danielson.
And Jennifer Danielson and Scott Sun. It feels like there's like so many people.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us a few minutes. We are, uh, putting some attention and giving you a high level overview around just some of the Minnesota State Accountability, uh, results that we did get over kind of late spring into summer. I'll just kind of preface that this really is almost like a two-part presentation. This is just going to be a little bit of the surface stuff and we're going to unpack it a little more in our next month one, where we're going to talk a little bit more around, um, how we've kind of responded to some of the results and some of our takeaways and kind of steps moving, uh, into this year. So we'll go ahead and start, um, with Jennifer Danielson around our, um, attendance. And then we'll move into graduation and then we'll talk about the MCAs. Oh, yes, I get to. Again, you know, like kind of how I had over, uh, talked about, this is just a high level overview. We're not getting into individual sites. We're really talking about the district and a snapshot, um, on how we're doing as a whole. And I do want to ground us around just some kind of, um, key approaches or thoughts that we had when we were, uh, prepping this presentation. Number one, we, um, when we look at this data, we really look for trends. We're looking for patterns over time. Even MDE really talks about not using this data at a very individual level. It also, we talk about like lagging and leading indicators around data. Since state assessments are only happening once a year, it happens at the end of the year. It gives us a, a data point, but it doesn't necessarily give us the complete picture. And this is really where we want to start merging data to kind of get a complete picture of what's going on. And so that's where attendance and other formative assessments, um, will start unpacking to really get into action steps. But, uh, when I was a, a school administrator, uh, we don't always have our A game every single day. And I know also students have opinions about assessments and doing mandatory assessments sometimes. And so I don't always think it, uh, is an accurate reflection of kind of what's going on, um, for the entire year. It's one snapshot at one, uh, moment in time. I would also say that this information doesn't necessarily track growth, uh, because again, it is just, um, at the end of that school year, usually generally around the springtime. And then you will see a little bit of data that is, um, broken down. We really do want to see what are the patterns happening across, um, all students, but also, um, in some of our subgroups. To really unpack, how do we be responsive to needs that are showing up across the organization, across the system? All right. Now I'm turning it over.
Good framing up. All right. So speaking about attendance, finally so you can advance. So an important piece to remember about the attendance data is, A, attendance data is very complicated and there's factors, students that are counted, students that are not counted, lots of different layers to it. This data is from the 23, 24 school year. So it's, it's old data. It's not from last school year. It is the data from the 23, 24 school year. So that's an important piece to remember as well, that it's, it's a little bit older than some of the MCA data that we'll talk about. But overall, you can see statewide, we increased as a state in our consistent attendance, which is defined as students attending 90% of their school days or more. And in South St. Paul, we have greatly increased that percentage, um, from 2021 to 2022 to 2023. So a good increase, yes. We're on an upward trend for attendance. It's a big focus area, um, for us this year. But so some good growth and more than double or almost more than double the growth of the state for us. So. Um, some breaking down of the different subgroups here. So a piece with this as well is some of our subgroups, when you break it down further, the numbers are really small. So it makes it hard to compare, um, to the statewide average, whether it's several, several more students in that, several hundreds more. But overall, we're kind of, we're below some of those areas for our white students, for our students of color, um, our free and reduced population, special education, and then English learners. So this is something to kind of look at for us to see why are we lagging in some of those areas? And do we have differences across? One of the things that I've seen with this is we definitely have better consistent attendance for our younger students. And as students get older, that consistent attendance drops off. We have significantly more students that are out of school at our high school level than we do at kindergarten and first grade, right? And there are a lot of factors that go into that, um, and something that we'll be taking, we'll get deeper this year. So with that, some strategies, if you haven't seen some of the Packer Pride or some of the Strategic Plan things, we do have a goal related to attendance. Um, what you'll notice is the data that's in the goal is different than some of the data on the slides I just showed you, right? Cause our data that's in the goal is based on our 24, 25 data for our baseline. So it's not the official MDE information, but it's what we have in campus and kind of what we're using as our baseline so that we can pull that data each month to see if we're making progress. We also added an attendance and student engagement specialist position at the secondary building. So this is someone who will connect with students who are struggling with attendance, catching them kind of early on there to see who are students that are kind of running into that pattern? What are the barriers? What are they struggling with? Is it struggling with transportation? Is it because they have to care for a younger sibling? Is it because they're anxious about school? Like what are those patterns so that she can help and intervene in those? Um, we're also looking at how to increase our communication to families about the importance of attendance. It's important to be at school. It's important to be at school every day. But then there are also things to like, if you threw up the night before, we don't want you at school, right? So sometimes there can be mixed messages about attendance. We just want to make sure that we're communicating with our families. Um, and continuing to build partnerships with Dakota County. So I actually have a meeting tomorrow with Dakota County Intruency. Um, and just continuing to build on that partnership with Dakota County. Um, and then monthly meetings with staff with attendance as well. And then we'll look at revising our policy this year. So a lot of work around attendance. And I'll turn it over to graduation.
I'm going to take some time to highlight graduation here. This is, uh, the blue line is the state and the graduation trend there. The red line is here in South St. Paul. You'll notice that this year we did take a drop. We had a 70.6% graduation rate. Something else that you will notice is you will notice that this is 2024 data. Similar to attendance, they lag the data a year behind. Um, and so we don't necessarily get that information publicly. At the end of the school year, it comes a year delayed. When you break that information down by subgroups, again, that you will see that we do have a gap between the state average and what we are showing up. Um, and you will kind of see that that does mirror, um, down most of our subgroups. We are lagging behind what the state is showing up. Um, obviously one of the, um, I think more prominent data points that, you know, we have been unpacking is obviously our English language learners. Um, that is obviously not, uh, a number that we want to be okay with. So when we, um, unpacked it a little more, and again, like I said, I'm giving you a district-wide overview. We will do some more unpacking of this at next month's presentation. But some things to summarize that we are tackling is, um, working around proactively progress monitoring. So tying it a little closer so that, uh, we can actually be responsive to the data that we see. And so this year, the high school's reviewing grades every six weeks and intervening using Win Wednesday, uh, before a student fails a class. That connection point is actually a little tighter this year than we've done in previous years. We're also doing a more rapid response to course failure. When we looked at data and when students are starting to fail classes, how we respond and how quickly respond. We are, um, closing that gap on what are some next steps that we can do with them to keep them on track. Um, we're also doing data informed curriculum and coaching. So really looking at those course passing rates, uh, and reviewing that alongside curriculum and resources and along with coaching. Credit recovery planning, students behind on credits are identified prior to 11th grade and offered guidance. And some of this guidance may include, um, having much more targeted support over at our CLC. You know, one of the data points that we are seeing is that by the time a student realizes that they're behind and decides to maybe transition to CLC, they're so far behind in credit that they actually, it's just, just unachievable to actually stay on track. And so how do we, again, tighten that window so that they're getting the support they need to stay on track? Um, and then improving grading practices. The high school has made some adjustments around their grading practices to better support student success. And then, uh, support for students with, um, maybe more personalized services. Um, and making sure that our grading practices are equitable, um, and targeted, and in particular around our English learners. So those are some areas that we have already been making changes. And again, we'll unpack that a little more next month. But just kind of a overview summary, um, in particular around our graduation rate.
All right. I'm going to talk about the MCAs, which is the state assessments. Um, the purpose, they're state mandated assessments that measure student progress toward the Minnesota State Academic Standards. The reading takes place in grades three through eight and in 10th grade. The math in grades three, three through eight and then 11th grade. And then the science assessment, grades five, eight, and then in high school, um, corresponding to life science or biology when students take that course. We use the MCAs to identify system-wide strengths and needs. Inform curriculum and instruction planning, support school improvement goals, meet state and federal accountability requirements. It is not for individual student decision-making. It's more a systems check. We don't use that assessment with teachers as Amy talked about to look at growth. Um, it's more a systems check. Here is our reading data, um, since the 2020, 2021 school year. And as you can see, we're doing better and better. And so our net change is 6.1%, where the state has seen a decrease of 2.9%. So that's good news. As you're aware of, we've adopted a number of new curriculum in, in, um, reading. So in elementary, we have Ufly, which is our foundational literacy program in K2. That is in its third year. We're in our first year of functional morphology, which is for grades three through five, our foundational literacy program. And then we went through curriculum review for, um, ELA, English Language Arts in the Middle School. And they're adopting arts and letters this year. So a lot of positive changes are happening in reading and our results are indicating that. And then for math, a similar trend here. We're going up, um, at a positive rate, 5.8%. Um, is, is the trend over the last few years here where the state has gone up, um, 1%. So again, we're heading, um, in the right direction with our math scores. They're not where we want them to be quite yet, but we are, um, heading in a, in a positive direction in math. Science, there's no data this year because we had new Minnesota State standards in science. So that when that happens, we take the MCA, but it's almost like a trial period where those scores we're not, we're not looking at yet. But again, the district is seeing positive growth, um, in science, whereas the state, um, has gone down in the last few years. So across the board, the MCAs, we're seeing some very positive trends in the district with our data. We've desegregated the data again, and this is really helpful when we're working with administrators, when we're working with instructional coaches, when we're working with teachers to look to see how we're doing across the system in terms of how students are, um, art students are doing. And similar to what was presented earlier, I think one of the areas we're really, um, wanting to improve on is our English language learners. So how we can better support, um, English language learners throughout the system. And then also our sped students, students on IEPs. And if we look at the math data, very similar trend, um, where we were below the state, um, in terms of MCA scores. And then when we look at the desegregated data, it's a similar story of how students are performing when we break apart the data that way. And again, this informs what we're doing across the system in order to make changes. So some key takeaways, we've increased again in reading and math. Year before in MCAs and science, we also increased. This year we don't have the data, um, but upward trend with the MCA data. Some improvement strategies. I talked a bit about, um, our literacy programming. Year three of wit and wisdom, Ufly year three, functional morphology. We had a pilot last year. So this is our first year. And then arts and letters in the middle school, this will be their first year. And so, um, some of the data can be lagging when we do, um, a literacy curriculum. It takes multiple years, um, for teacher practice, um, to influence, um, student results and outcomes. So we're putting all of the pieces in place. Another thing that we're, we're doing is working on our MTSS, um, processes. And so multi-tiered systems of support responding to student needs at all grade levels is something that we're working on. Student Services Department had, um, a grant that they went for and that they got. So we have an MTSS specialist in our district, um, that's helping us with a guidebook to create these systems and to have systems in place as folks leave the system and enter the system. We have a system for MTSS. Teacher PLCs, that's their professional learning communities, um, have been a way to, um, you know, really dig into the standards to, um, better outcomes on the MCAs. We have a coaching model. Equity and instructional coaches as well as peer coaches that work with teachers. And then our teacher evaluation process are all part of that continuous improvement. Strengthening our intervention model. That goes hand in hand with MTSS. One of our big projects this year is improving intervention so that when, um, students get an intervention, hopefully we get them to grade level by giving them more individualized support. Supporting data literacy for leaders and teachers to better identify students with needs. And so, um, the data literacy piece is a huge part of our work this year with teachers. So they better understand the data. And now that we have new curriculum, they have to understand those assessments. They have to understand, um, all the moving parts, um, in order to both progress monitor along the way and then also understand summative assessments and what they need to do to reteach throughout, um, the school year. And then finally co-teaching as part of our EL model. We have more and more EL students. So what are we doing to support those students in both a push-in model? EL teachers pushing into general ed classrooms to support students. And then what does that pull-out model look like for more, um, intensive, um, service? All right. Any questions for us?
On the, the graduation rate for English language learners, are these students like choosing not to graduate? Like do they, like, is it a, an active choice they're making or do they just blend off, you know, blend off into, um, into space? And then my second question kind of related to that is, do we differentiate at all how long they've been maybe in country? Like, did they come here at 16 or at six? Like, is there a difference between the, between the models?
So I, I would say from my, like, what I have seen, I'm not sure if necessarily kids are like actively choosing, like I'm choosing not to graduate on time. I think again, what, uh, they're navigating at that time and space is taking precedent. And there are barriers, you know what I mean, as to, um, like how they can get to a solution base. And again, what we're trying to put some attention towards is how do we come alongside them? How do we create, you know, points where we can do checkpoints on how they're doing? And when we start seeing them slip, how do we then like have a more collaborative conversation with the family? And say, here are the resources or what are the right resources at that moment? I don't think any kid is intentional, you know what I mean? But I do think sometimes things are very overwhelming and we give up, you know what I mean, in that time or place. You know, I think there's still some unpacking that we have to do as of what are the root causes, which is why all this systems talk is happening. And what we're spending a lot of time doing is putting like, what are, is ways that we can look at data from across the whole system and start checking in, um, to really understand what's going on? If that kind of answers your question.
And is there a difference between length of time?
So I would say that like across our state as a whole, we struggle with kids who are like, uh, like long-term English learners. And so, um, there are kind of like five levels of learning a language. And they do say it takes multiple years to learn a language. We, many times you'll very quickly move through the levels, like one, zero, one and two. As you start getting into like three, four and five, like the depth of like academic knowledge in like listening and speaking and writing and reading, it's pretty, you know, expansive. So you, it takes longer to kind of get proficient at that. And that is the, kind of the work of like, how do you move them through those upper levels? Because that is, um, a lot of students who get EL services kind of sit in that space. Newcomers, we can pretty quickly move them, you know what I mean, through those early levels. Really the bigger conversation is when they are newcomer coming in at high school, you know, now you're talking about credits. And so we're kind of like. And so we're kind of like trying to work within the system we have so that we don't create barriers for them.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I guess I just wanted to note that, like, improving student performance is at the top of our strategic plan. And so it is just so encouraging to see continued growth in attendance and MCAs that it is right at the heart of the sort of the promise that we're making to people in South St. Paul about what we want to see in our schools and how we want to think about the future of our city and who the future residents of our city are going to be and how equipped they are to be citizens and, and active participants in, in the, in the city that we all love. As I've been talking to education support professionals and teachers and paraprofessionals and others, there have been moments in which they've said, "It has been really challenging to learn a new curriculum." Or, "I'm trying to get my head around something," or, "This is new." And, and that has been something that has been challenging. But I think we're seeing the rewards of a lot of that work that have been put in from our students and from our teachers and from our paraprofessionals and from, from you all in our district office. And so I wanted to just say thank you and know that from us, this is really important work. And you clearly recognize that. And we're clearly seeing the, the result of, of a lot of the interventions that you're doing. And as you're showing us, we don't even know the depth of everything, but you're showing us that you're not taking a one-in approach. You're taking a multi-pronged approach to so many of these things. And so, thank you. We're noticing. It's very much appreciated, appreciated. It's on the right trend. And it is the core of what we're looking for in terms of the next five years is continued growth in this area. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you so much for your kind words.
Thank you. Yeah. If there's nothing else, we look forward to the second half.
I'm bringing a bigger team next time, so.
Thank you. All right. Next up, item 4E, stakeholder comments to the board. As a reminder to the community, there are two ways to make comment to the board. You may either submit an online form or appear before the board in person if you would like to speak to us in person. We have set aside time at our first meeting of the month, which is the second Monday of each month at 6:30 PM at the district office during our extended work session meetings. No one came to speak to the board at our session on Monday, September 8th, and we also received no online comments during this time. So I now turn things over to Vice Chair Claflin to give an update on the work session.
Thank you. This evening's work session was packed full of a lot of really great information. Besides being able to welcome our student reps and get to know each other a little bit more, we heard quite a bit of information from Mark Fenton and Ra Choth and some support staff from Ellers and Wold, who came to remind us about all the work that we've done over the past few years looking at our facilities and long-term planning, trying to figure out what should we come back to our community and ask for their continued support of our facilities and our ability to have these great educational programs in our schools. So as we are trying to figure out how to approach our community and ask for additional tax funding in the coming years, that we had a little reminder of what we've done and preparation for that conversation going forward. And then we heard the proposed levy for this coming year. We'll hear that again briefly before the Board, the business meeting, and some updates about the insurance plans for our staff. Quite a bit got in there this evening. And previously, we also had a work session where we did a lot of work on our superintendent and board evaluations for the next year and making our plan for the next two years of board work. So there's a lot going on.
Thank you. All right. I'll hand it over to Dr. Zambrino for the superintendent's update.
Sounds great. Really fun seeing the new brand showing up on these slides, isn't it? The, the colors pop and the designs, it just adds a fun element as I've been sitting here soaking it all in. But what a great start to the year we've had. One of the things I love, being in a small district, is you get into the buildings a lot, and I've been in all the buildings. And they just feel great. And I think we see that here today with what we saw with our Kaposha peeps that were here. And just been a great start. And we want to welcome back our students and wish them great success this year. Fun seeing the picture here. I see a former student, superintendent, student advisory council member, and some CDL, CDLU leaders. And just fun to think about how much engagement we get to have with our, our students. And our kids are the best. You know, actually, even when, just, I know, and I'll talk a little bit more about the data points in a second. But I appreciate Dr. Sunstrom mentioned the word "systems" a lot, system, systems. And that, that really is the best word. Because when I came to the role about three and a half years ago and saw the outcomes, I mean, we're coming off the pandemic. It was a challenge. And I very quickly learned that we have the best kids and we have the best staff. And if you have the best kids and the best staff and you're not getting the best outcomes, that tells you the system isn't designed to get the outcomes because it's not a people issue. And so it's been so fun to work with the people. Our kids are resilient, they're strong. Their parents show up and, and support them. And our teachers and other staff just really deliver on the daily. So thank you to everybody and welcome back again. One of the fun things we got to do as we started the year, and we got to do this last year, we really want to make sure that our kids feel connected. And you heard that, how Terry, Principal Brito, he talked about the classrooms have names to bring the kids in and, and kind of focus around that. And we really want to get them set off on the right foot, started off on the right footing. And so all of our kindergartners last year and again this year were provided with little South St. Paul Packer shirts. We did not have the brand official yet, so it is the old logo, but it still looks great on them. And want to say thank you to the Educational Foundation for supporting that. But in particular, Dr. Dave Metzen and the Lollaberties, John and Nikki, really helped make that happen. So we got to go classroom to classroom and give the kids the shirts and watch them light up. So much fun. And John had a lesson for all of them. He said, "I want to make sure you know one thing that I want you to remember for the rest of your life." And he taught every class, "Once a Packer, always a Packer." So now all of our kindergartners are well-versed in what it means to, to be a Packer. But the foundation's such an important partner all the time, but really a fun way to welcome the kids into the school year and help them feel that connection to school. So like I said, just been a great start. Exciting news for our, our colleagues and teachers and staff at Lincoln Center. They were named a Minnesota School of Excellence by the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association. And so that was something that was started, boy, I want to say, like, a couple of years ago. They had some, some projects they had to do to, to qualify for this. And the MESPA, as they're called, their acronym, looks at a few things. They look at leadership, student learning, teacher collaboration, community engagement, and growth. And so they look at research-based standards. And I know from talking to Principal Marty at the time, they were doing some things like a strategy around a way you greet kids when they come into the classroom and different things that they were gathering data and, and collecting that on. So it was kind of an all-hands-on-deck effort there. And we're really excited that they got that distinction. And certainly, our schools are the best. So it's great to see them get recognized by MESPA for that. I won't go too deep into that, but we had a little look at that. We'll go deeper with it next time. But super excited about the outcome, so why not say it again? We saw across our organization, math up by 3.2 points and reading about one point. There's ups and downs within that. And remember, as, as we saw, Dr. Sunstrom showed that not all tests happen at all grades. But the highlights kind of that came in this year were Kaposha being up about, I think they were 3.9, about 4 in math, 4.3 in reading. The middle school up again, 2.7 points in each of those areas. And then the high school up 8.4 points in the math scores. The year before, Lincoln Center had a really great year. So as we averaged that in over two years, we're sitting at like 4.9 and 5.3 points of growth. You know, the reality is, we'd love to see 10 and 20 points of growth. That is actually not realistic. It, it takes sustained hard work to, to build that positive trajectory. And it's really exciting to see that since '21, I hate to see the state going down, but I sure love seeing us going up. I don't know where the sweet spot is. Again, tests are not everything. And I don't want anyone to walk away thinking, "All we care about is test scores." That is not our case. And we firmly believe we should be able to compete with the state of Minnesota here. So somewhere near that state average is probably realistic when you take into account our poverty rates, mobility, and some of the factors that aren't affecting other communities, but might be affecting other communities more than us. But all, all counts point to things are on a great trajectory. I was, had a meeting today with our teacher union president and just said, you know, how impressed I've been with our teachers and how they just leaned in. Like, we shared before, we had the science of reading training. A lot of them jumped into that before it was required. And when we put together options for them to get trained, the vast majority of them jumped into the summer option so they could come into last year ready. Our upper elementary teachers are already in. So again, Scott, Dr. Sunstrom mentioned, we're in year three of Whitt and Wisdom and UFLY. The state is actually really officially in just starting year two. Our teachers have already identified the gaps, and that's why we've brought in the functional morphology curriculum. So that's what's so neat to see with our staff leaning in and being so forward-looking. We're actually really, I think, far ahead of where we could be. So huge shout out to the families and kids for what they do at the home front and our staff here. Really exciting to see the outcomes coming along. And I hope our teachers are feeling that because, man, they work hard. And nothing feels worse than working hard and not getting outcomes you want. And I'm really thrilled to see that. I won't go too long on the tree planting. We had that slide in there. And of course, Terry came to, with the team to, to do a, a great presentation on that. But again, I was so sad when I saw the trees coming down around town. So it's fun to see the ways that we're going to get creative to get them back. And then, of course, the lessons learned. If you looked at that map, how diverse the trees are. So we're not going to have one disease come through and take them all out. Hopefully, no diseases come through and take any of them out. But really neat to see that sustainability approach and having the kids really be part of that. And I, I think it's going to be something they're going to talk about for years to come, especially as they come back and see those trees growing. So shout out to Tree Trust and Lincoln Center. Tri-district caps, we had one of our student reps talking about her interest in caps. I did get to see Finette present. So what's kind of cool, at the beginning of the year, all five programs of the caps come together, and they're trained in human-centered design, and they come up with design challenges. And so I got to watch our healthcare cap students present theirs and taking on some really great topics. So how to prevent drug use within teens, how to prevent vaping was a big one for them, which excites me because there's just nothing I, I just can't stand the fact that they're marketing these to our, our students. But our students are smart enough to know they are, so they're ready to take on those challenges and combat them. So it's neat because that's a chance for our kids and the Two Rivers and similarly kids to be together across the caps. And now they go out into their different caps programs to, you know, work on these ideas and bring them further to fruition. The internships that Finette had talked about are just life-changing. So very excited about our tri-district caps and that we continue to have that. It's a good lesson, and you can get further together than going alone. And so I know we still want to beat them dearly in football games. But outside of that, we want to be great partners with them. And we are 4-0, so I'm just saying. We'll see them on the football field here again. This one came later, but very excited to share. Vivian Kay earned a full-ride scholarship at the University of Southern California through Quest Bridge. And this is a kind of a pet project that our dean of students at the high school, Allison Terrell, brought in. She had a, a good connection to that organization. And we've been seeing about a kid a year getting a full-ride, four-year tuition, housing, food, books, supplies, and travel. And as the father of three, one in college and two on the way, that sounds pretty awesome. And so that matching process happened over the summer, which is why we weren't able to share that before. But we want to give a shout out to Allison Terrell for making that happen. And congratulations to Vivian and her family. What a life-changing opportunity. Just some important dates. We've got homecoming week coming up here, the 29th through October 3rd. Have that Hall of Fame banquet as well on the homecoming night. MEA, no school the 16th and 17th of October. So just want to make sure people hold those on their calendars, so you're not caught off guard. Halloween, no school. It's a staff professional development day. What a wonderful idea to not have all the candy in the schools on that day. As a former principal, I always wished Halloween was like the last Saturday of the month so we wouldn't have to have it. Filling our schools with sugar-charged children. So good idea there. We'll do some professional learning and hope the kids have a very safe day. We are, of course, always at the great Halloween get-togethers while representing the district. And then on the elementary side, Kaposha PTA meeting on the 7th at 6:00. The Lincoln Center PTA on the 13th at 7:00. And then Lincoln's Got Retake Day on October 22nd. I know that's an important one for a lot of kids who didn't feel like they got their right picture. October 3rd is the retake day for our secondary. And then conferences right around the corner, 612 Conferences on October 9th. Athletics and activities, I mentioned the Hall of Fame is the same night as homecoming, so that's at 5 o'clock. The football game starts at 7:00. And then on the 20th is our opening day for our dance team, girls, basketball, and wrestling. Just rolling here. Can you believe it? Like, so much going on, lots to keep track of. We have an awesome website that has always been awesome, full of information. Now it's even better to look at. So please, take some time, hop on our website. But you can track anything going on with the district, our school board. All of our meeting agendas and minutes are available there and all those great quality and actions if you want to go back and watch one you missed.
Thank you, Dr. Zambrino.
Thank you, Chair Human.
All right. Next, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent items on tonight's agenda, which include the financial claims and bills payable and staffing as presented. Do I have a motion? Second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0 and consent agenda passes. All right. Next up is policies. We have no policies up for review tonight, but the policy committee resumes regular meetings on September 29th. So look forward to exciting action in this spot in the future. All right. Business items. We have three business items before us this evening. First, I'm looking for a motion for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2025 payable 2026 proposed levy.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Wonderful. And I invite Ra Choth up to speak about this annual process.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Just want to give a brief update here on the 2025 payable 2026 proposed levy. This is an annual process, which a lot of public schools entities are conducting around September because we have a statutory obligation to our county auditors by September 30th. The proposed levy amounts here will deviate just a tad bit because of MDE right now, still doing their calculation, doing their final runs. Part of this process will also lead into December. I think we pencil in already for the true phantom taxation, December 8th. By statute, it has to occur for public comment after 6 PM here. So this is just a proposal. This is one of many steps here. After this review, and if there's any questions I can help answer, I will send out the forms to the county auditors and also get the TNT going here for the proposed levy.
All right. I just want to double-check. Does it need to be, it's just an approval, it's not a resolution, right?
Correct.
Do we have any further questions for Ra? I will let the public know. He covered this in our work session earlier this evening. And it is an annual process that we go through. So it's not a major, ah, money. Okay. If there are no questions, then I ask all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. It carries 6-0. Please submit our information to the county.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next, I'm looking for a motion for the school, South St. Paul School Board to approve the transportation contracts.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Excellent. And Ra, I hand it back to you.
Well, thank you again, Madam Chair. I just want to say that it takes quite a lot of folks around the community to run a school district. And I just want to thank the governance, the community, operation, finance, academics, of course. It takes a lot, you know? There, there's teachers on the front lines, and also there's the bus driver driving our kid safely to and from school. Having said that, we initiated conversation over the summer for negotiations between our current transportation provider. And I worked closely with Calis Sourcing here, who I worked at from a previous district, analyzed data here and come up with a win-win solution for the district and also dealing with our constraints and parameters with the budget. Having said that, in front of you right now, there is a two-plus-two-year agreement with our current provider, Safeway, to have some safety languages in the contracts. We, we have laid out- We have laid out languages, we have laid out rates to make it more clear. And with your approval tonight, if there's any questions or anything, please let us know. Me and Ryan are here. We can stand for any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I want to thank you for the work. I know when we listen to the news, transportation cost is like increasing everywhere. And so obviously, it's recognized that we're going to have to pay more in this contract. But I appreciate the work that went into making sure that this is reasonable as far as our budget works and respectful of our partner at Safeway.
Yes. Thank you.
If there are no further comments or questions, all those in favor of approval of the transportation contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Carries 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, I'm looking for a motion for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2026 and 2027 self-insured health insurance contracts with health partners. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Wonderful. And I'd like to invite our new HR Director Charlie Cookup to speak with us. And Ra. Hey, team.
So I just want to say thanks for having me up. This is my first school meeting at South St. Paul, so excited about it. And we're going to kind of dive into the insurance, the 2026, 2027 self-insurance health insurance contract. So with that, as required by the Health Insurance Transparency Act, we need to go out for bids for self-insured because we're a self-insured health insurance plan effective January 1, 2026. Six carriers submitted proposals with the lowest and most competitive bid coming from currently health partners, which is our current provider as well. So what we're seeking is for an acceptance of that. Going for our insurance committee, our insurance committee also recommends this. Our insurance committee is made up of a lot of our employee groups when it comes to clericals, ESPs, teachers, district office staff, based on, that way everyone kind of has a say when it comes to what we're looking at. Based on the actual claims, we're looking at an 8% increase in health insurance premiums and a 3% increase in dental insurance premiums, no change to life or LTD. And then some miscellaneous changes is removal coverage for GLP-rend medications for purposes of weight loss and then increased communication with the district to reduce costs. So wellness, prescription mailings, things like that would go from there.
Again, this is a topic that was presented to us this evening at the work session. But if there are any further questions or comments, the board would like to ask at this time?
Well, can I just, I'd just like to say that the health and wellness of our employees is of top concern. To ensure that people can come in and be safe and healthy to the workplace and be at home is of primary importance. And so, and I wanted to thank Ra and Charlie for the work for quite a bit of time to keep these costs to a minimum in the past, especially for our employees. And as I have been told, for, in comparison to other districts, we actually have kept the costs extremely low over time. I will say, I know that this may be like shouting at the wind related to what is going on within health insurance and the costs of healthcare. But, you know, this is a significant increase in healthcare costs year over year that is not borne, that is not due to anything that has happened with the insurance group or with Charlie or with Ra or anyone like that. It is the state of health insurance. But those costs will be borne by employees. And that, and so that, you know, and then we'll see other reductions that will have an impact, that could have an impact on their health. I know that that reduction in removing GLP-1, that is a serious gigantic cost. It is a gigantic cost driver. And it also has shown to improve the health of some of the people in our district. And so I wanted to say thank you for your work. I wanted to say thank you for your engagement with the insurance group. I wanted to thank you for doing all that you can to get the best deal possible. And health insurance is an industry that is, the costs are rising way too much and they're being borne by employees. And that is a regrettable thing. But with all that said, I know that you have done all the best that you can to keep our employees well, to keep them safe, and to keep the costs down. But an 8% increase is much higher than inflation and that that is a cost that will be borne by our employees that do so much for our district. So.
Thank you, Director Cummings.
I would also like to remind our community and our staff that they haven't borne an increase for the last, did you say, five years?
Right.
So when we take into account how inflation has moved in those years, this is still a very reasonable increase due to your fiduciary magic. All right. All those in favor of approval of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we are reaching the end. As our final agenda item this evening, I ask our school board members to share updates on committees they serve on or highlight any recent district activities or events that they may have participated in. And I'll start with Director Weber.
So as you may have noticed, the district has undergone a brand refresh. And in that, our wonderful, wonderful friends and partners at the South St. Paul Educational Foundation put together these shazzy new shirts that on the first day of school, all of our staff had these new shirts with our new logo and our new motto of engage, educate, empower. And they got the lovely, that's, we're sorry. The lovely South St. Paul Educational Foundation right there. So just a sincere thank you for the many, 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 many different projects that the Educational Foundation helps in the classroom, out of the, you know, in the classroom, in the community. It just, the whole, the whole kit and caboodle. They do a wonderful job and we are so lucky as a community to have them, to have them involved. So that's my shameless plug for the t-shirt that I got. I also can't wait for On the Road Again, the first weekend in October. It's one of my favorite events I think the South St. Paul does all year. We will have a school table, school sort of table, so come say hi. I'm sure you can find out more information on the brand refresh. I'm sure we'll have some swag to give away with the new, the new brand refresh. And so that's always one of my favorite, favorite events of the year, and I can't wait to go.
Thank you. Director Cummings.
Well, since I've talked so much tonight, I will be brief. It has been great to see a lot of our student athletes. I've tried to go to a few. I'm hoping to go to a few more. Our football team has done incredible. I saw them play against Richfield. And our cheer squad was awesome.
Yeah.
We have such a great cheer squad in South St. Paul, and so I hope you get out there. Was able to see our girls compete in swimming this year and our volleyball team doing all they can. And they're, these are just really great community events to go to. So please check our student athletic schedules and our arts and lots of great things going on, and they will continue through the fall. So, yep. Come on, support us.
Vice Chair Clapham.
Oh, thank you. I have to really thank all of the folks in the front offices at the schools. The communications to parents this year have been fantastic and certainly highlighted with the new logos and design from our communications folks as well. But the information going home to parents has been very, very helpful and informative and timely this year. So thank you to all of the staff who are helping to support our teachers and the administration. You often are doing unsung work and definitely have an impact in making the start of the school year go very smoothly. Parents are probably your biggest headache. I'm looking forward to all the activities that are starting to fill up our calendars with the walkathon later this week and On the Road Again coming up. There's quite a bit that's starting to really come together with a lot of different events. And I was very disappointed not to be able to go to the tree planting. And I'm so excited for those kids to have that opportunity to come back to their school and see the impact that they've made for it. There's a tree that was planted the day I was born, and it did actually move from our first house to our house here. And it still is standing on Fifth Avenue, and I can go past it and see how much it's grown. So those kids will have that same opportunity, and I'm so excited for them. Sorry to have missed it.
Nice. Director Duffy.
Yep. Football's 4-0. It's been great. The kids are excited and seeing Capoja come in here today and talk about their tree planting. Really good thing Mr. Breitoy brought up, just leaving a lasting legacy in what the kids get to do. And I'm just gonna, we unfortunately lost a young man who I had the privilege to coach. And you talk about the lasting legacy. He, he's an integral piece. I don't know if our football team would be 4-0 without some of these kids watching how he went about his day and seeing the effort he put in on the football team. So it's been, it's been a little hard, a big hit for our community. And I just, my heart goes out to his family and what they're going through. But I don't know if our program would be where it is today without people like Matthew Lee and what he's done for our program. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Duffy. Director Felton.
Yes, hi. There's several things that I'm going to mention. Most of these I have already talked about. Of course, the first one, this Wednesday, only a couple days from right now, which is the walkathon for the Education Foundation at Lincoln Center. Looking forward to that. Starts at 4:30. Every student in our district has an opportunity to come do a financial support for the Education Foundation. Looking forward to that. And also, as has been mentioned about the On the Road Again, which is on Saturday, October 4th, I will be there also for about four hours working at our table. So please, yes, stop by and see us. And as I have mentioned also, at the Senior Center at Central Square, coming up, well, of course, it's a month away, it's Wednesday, October 29th, which is our Senior Center Fashion Show. This fashion show, we do twice a year. Of course, I do modeling. It starts at 11 o'clock in the morning. There's a $20 fee, which pays for all the wonderful lunch that we are having, a catered lunch from the coop. So it's a really, really good chicken dinner. So if you are interested in coming to that fashion show, you have to reserve your spot in advance because we do have a approximate, about 75 people that we can have in there to attend this event for the space that we have ready for them. So if you are interested in coming to that, please make your reservation at Central Square. And then the one that's coming up, that's really looking forward to also from the Education Foundation, coming up on Thursday, November 6th, which is our Friend of the Foundation Gala annual event. And I have a sheet here that I'm going to read, which was issued to us at our last meeting from Director Beth Squara. I'm going to read this letter to everyone. There's a lot of wonderful, informative information on it. Dear Friends of the Foundation, we are celebrating our annual Friends of the Foundation Gala at the Mendocino Country Club, which we also did last year, on Thursday, November 6th. This event raises essential funds that support the South St. Paul Educational Foundation work of providing life-changing scholarships and programs for the students here in South St. Paul Public Schools. In the last year alone, the Foundation was able to award $616,250 in scholarships to 141 South St. Paul seniors and more than 25 program grants that impacted every single student in the district with field trips, books, equipments, et cetera, that they would not have otherwise had access to. This event includes a silent and live auction, and we are seeking donations from the community. Some items to consider including tickets to sporting or theater events, artwork, weekend getaways, classes such as cooking or painting, children's activities, and unique baskets of related items. Cash donations are always welcomed and greatly appreciated as well. The South St. Paul Education Foundation has a tax-exempt number. All donations are tax-deductible to the full extent allowed by the law. So please, if you have any questions about this, please contact Beth Squara at the Foundation. And on this form, it also has a space on it. It says that you can bring or send the item to the Foundation Office on Marie Avenue, or you can contact them at the office if you need to make an arrangement to have your item picked up, which they would be willing to do. Or you can always enclose a financial donation. So I have several copies of this, this paper, and it does ask for any donations, contributions. Please return them by October 20th. So if you are interested in doing any type of a donation for this event, it is a wonderful fun event. I know personally, since I have attended it for many, many times, I always purchase several of these items. I always get a lot of Christmas presents there, a lot of wonderful variety of items that are on their, on their fundraiser. So it is a lot of fun. So consider attending that event. It is a very, very nice, enjoyable event. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Felton. I would like to share, back on September 3rd, which feels like forever ago now, at the beginning of the school year, who was able to attend the open house for our early childhood family education program. I know we've talked about it here at different meetings, that they made the decision this summer to move out of the district office building into Capoja Education Center, which is a really perfect fit for their programming, for the space, and welcoming our families of their youngest kids into a school setting right away. The open house is amazing. Jean Zender told me over 27 families came. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who showed up and who supports these programs and to people who aren't aware of what they are. I want to remind you, it's amazing programming offered to our families. It's not income-based. It is like for anyone who has little kids who aren't quite school age yet, they have programming for new parents of tiny babies through just before school-age kiddos. It's an asset for families, an opportunity to connect with people who are at the same kind of point that you are in your lives. I know, I hear regularly people who talk about their ECFE class experiences and the lifetime friends they've made because their kids are kind of at the same touch points and they have a lot in common from having that shared experience. So I want to encourage our families to look into that. If you're more interested in hearing more about this, you can just Google ECFE and SSP and it will take you. The first top like eight hits were our district website. I tested it out also in cognitomode. And if you're already a big fan of ECFE programming, I would like to make a shout out that the Early Learning Advisory Council is looking for members. I told them I would say that. So please consider joining ELAC, as they call themselves. If you Google ECFE SSP, you will find their information and how to connect to be a part of that. I'd also like to thank our partners at the city. Again, school starting feels like forever ago because we're really rolling into it. But the fact that the construction on Marie Avenue kind of tied up in time so that there wasn't busing disruption for our first day for our kids at the secondary building is really a gift. And I want to thank the city for our work to make sure that that worked out for us and the partnership we continue to have with them. I have to also shout out that Read Across South St. Paul will be starting up very soon. That's also a city program. And if anyone's interested in that... And if anyone's interested in that, contact Deb Griffith. Okay. That's all. I hereby entertain a motion to adjourn our Monday, September 22nd, 2025 school board meeting.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 6-0 for closing the meeting. We are adjourned at 7:30. Nicely done. And thank you.